Okay, good evening, everybody. We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to the February 24th meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen. All of my colleagues are present, and we have just adjourned an executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to litigation involving a claim before the Massachusetts Commission against Discrimination by a Police Officer in accordance with Mass. General Law 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, and also for the consideration of executive session minutes from January 13th and February 10th, both of 2020. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us on what was felt like a beautiful spring day today. We have up first the transmission of Treasury Warrants 33, 33A, 34, and 34A. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion's made, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. All those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. We have the approval of four sets of minutes. We'll take them up individually. We have first up, January 28th of 2019. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes, January 28th, 2019.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? We have, of course, four in favor and one abstention. Next up, we have February 4th of 2019.
So moved.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there a discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Four, four, and one abstaining. We didn't have the pleasure at that point. And March 11th of 2019.
Another motion.
Not the second.
Three for three, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Four, four, and one abstaining. I'm gonna give you another shot here.
I know, I was here for this one.
How about February 10th of 2020?
So moved.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And the second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That one is unanimous, thank you. And that brings us to our first appointment, which is a public hearing with Jill Elmstrom, man, of Mann, Mann and Mann PC on behalf of Fordham Park LLC for a permit to remove earth and property located at 100 to 110 Fordham Road. Good evening, welcome. Please come on up.
Okay, I am a degree, Jeff Merritt of Granite Engineering as well.
Absolutely. Please do, get comfortable.
Thank you. Again, Jill Elmstrom, man, here on behalf of Fordham Park LLC in connection with a request for an earth removal permit. I do have copies of the notices, do you mind if I, either you can scan them and send them back, because my secretary didn't? Okay. So we did notify the butters, as was required pursuant to your application process, and we did submit a request to be able to remove excess materials. This particular project is located at 100, 110 Fordham Road, it's where the Red Thread Building is, and it is now where we will have a distribution center for Amazon. So we are reconfiguring parts of the parking lot, and we have received our site plan approval, we have received our, that's the only approval really we needed. We were outside of the ground protection district, long water protection district, and outside of all conservation areas, so the only permit that was required was site plan approval, and that was issued a couple of weeks ago by the board, and the permit, the plans were signed and reviewed by planning. We do have a lot of excess materials that we need to haul offsite, and that's why. We're using some of them onsite, but there will be somewhere in the vicinity of 31,000 cubic yards of material that needs to be removed from the site. That is being done by a contractor Masterson, and we have provided you with a breakdown of that, and any questions I can answer, but that is a requirement to be able to develop the property. We have no choice, there's no place to really store that type of material.
Great, thank you very much. And again, your associate is?
Yes, Jeff Merritt, I'm an engineer with Granite Engineering. We did the civil site engineering for the project.
Great, thank you for being here.
And he was the person who had responded to certain questions from Mr. Holt, the town's reviewing, I think he's one of the town engineers, and he had reviewed our submittal, and then had questions of Mr. Merritt that they had gone back and forth and discussed.
Right. Do we have recommendations?
We do. We have communication from the Health Director Shelley Newhouse, the Health Department has no issues with the application for earth removal permit. The Building Department, Al Spalding, Building Inspector, the Building Department has no issues with the application for earth removal permit. We also have a memo from Paul Looney, the town engineer, and he recommends the approval with the number of conditions that are identified in his memo. I would just note that he indicates that this work to be done will actually improve the stormwater capture on the site, so it will be a net plus for the town.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions from my colleagues? Okay, seeing none. This is a public hearing? Mr. Eaton?
I do, so I see, and I trust that you've seen the memorandum with the conditions that are DPW?
No, we have not.
They have not, okay. So perhaps we should get into a discussion on that. So I see that there's gonna be some blasting of approximately 1,500 cubic yards?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay.
Mr. Chair, would it be appropriate to just run through these conditions in the event that, I mean, I would imagine that, my understanding has been that these conditions have been at least discussed with the applicant, but if you want, I can simply go through the conditions.
No objection?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I read through this and I saw those conditions, and I didn't give it a second thought to ask if they received it, because it would make sense that they would have already received the conditions. So why are we here, taking a vote on this if they oppose those conditions?
Well, again, my understanding is that the conversation would have been had, it may not have been formally put in writing to them, but I can go through the conditions. So the conditions of the permit is not assignable. Point one, point two, at the expiration of the permit, the grades shall conform substantially to the proposed grades as shown on the plan submitted with the application and approved by the planning board. Point three, at the expiration of the permit, the entire area shall be covered with loam and seeded with a recognized grass seed of good quality, except where the area consists of proposed hardscape, proposed pavement surface, or other specific landscape treatment. Point four, the applicant, its agent or employees shall use due caution when entering and leaving the site, and shall use extreme caution when passing school buses. Five, the hauling route for construction vehicles and equipment is anticipated to be Fordham Road to Concord Street to Route 93. The applicant shall notify the Engineering Division immediately of any changes to the route. Six, the hours of hauling on ways used by the public shall be limited to Monday through Friday inclusive, and not earlier than 7:00 a.m. or not later than 3:30 p.m. Point seven, the applicant shall agree to keep loam within the town of Wilmington whenever possible. Eight, if rock or ledge crushing operations are to be used on site, they will be limited to the hours of operation between 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. Nine, the applicant estimates approximately 1,500 cubic yards of material is expected to be, to require blasting. All blasting operations shall be in accordance with all town, state, and federal laws, regulations, and policies as may be applicable. Ten, the applicant or their designated contractor shall install a crushed stone construction entrance at the construction vehicle exit access location. Eleven, the applicant or their designated contractor is responsible for daily cleanup of all soil materials, stone, et cetera, tracked along the hauling route. Periodic inspections will be made by the Engineering Division to ensure that the contractor is in compliance with the conditions of the permit. Point twelve, the applicant or their designated contractor is responsible to limit all dust and excessive noise associated with the earth removal process. Periodic inspections will be made by the Engineering Division to ensure that the contractor is in compliance with the conditions of the permit. Point thirteen, the applicant will notify the town of his/her intention to obtain a renewal of this permit at least 30 days before the expiration date of the permit. Fourteen, the applicant is required to furnish a performance bond made payable to the town of Wilmington for the faithful performance of work under the permit. The Engineering Division is recommending a performance bond amount of $300,000. The surety company must be located and licensed to transact business in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The applicant shall contact the Engineering Division of the Department of Public Works to coordinate said performance bond. And then final point fifteen, in the event of any of the above conditions are not faithfully observed and performed, then the selectmen shall have the option to revoke the permit at any time.
Those conditions are all reasonable. I do have one question. The performance bond is simple for me to do, and I can deliver it over before the work is done, if this board determines to issue this special permit. The one question I have is, what's the length of the period? I apologize, I don't remember him saying what the duration was. I know we need...
It wasn't stated? No, I know, but...
It's one year?
One year.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure, so they didn't know if we had to say it or not?
February 24th.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. February 24th, 2021?
February 23rd, 2021, so a year essentially.
Oh, that's absolutely perfect. That's wonderful, thank you. Now, these are all, I mean, honestly, these are pretty general conditions, some of which are actually part of the site plan approval, so they are consistent with what we would have expected, and very reasonable.
So you're willing to agree to that?
Most certainly, we are.
There's some fine print in there about building us an elementary school. Don't worry about that.
That's the missing page?
Just add a couple of zeros on that bond, right?
Okay, as long as you're comfortable, wanna make sure that you're...
I'm most certainly comfortable. I appreciate you having read them, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Eaton, for raising that point.
Yes, very much, thank you.
I do have a couple other questions.
Please do.
So, I know that they, if you're looking at the street in the back of you, there's no exactly direct butters, because it's Route 93, but there is the Going Road, the Oak Ridge Circle, the Marcus Road neighborhoods, which would certainly, and Park Street to some extent as well, as well as some residents that live along Woburn Street, that certainly would be hearing some of the blasting that's going on. The condition that deals with the blasting of the 1,500 cubic yards does not specifically state any time limitation?
Well, I thought I said nine to...
Well, that's rock or ledge crushing, and I'm not sure if that falls within blasting, it just doesn't say, and this is...
We have, honestly, the fire department usually controls that, but limiting them for nine to three, blasting now takes a different effect than it ever used to. It's one loud boom, it's not like it used to be, it's a hit and done, because it's very surgical, the way in which they do it. They put very small blasts now, they don't, you know, like they used to do in the old days, when you literally could feel the vibration for, very far. It isn't like that anymore. They're doing, two doors down from my building, they blast, and it's a noise, and it's very fast and over.
Because I know only of a project in North Woburn, which is close to the Wilmington line on the ledges, which has been doing quite a bit of blasting over the past year or so, and...
It must be a huge amount, right?
I would certainly say it's more than 1,500 cubic yards, but at the same time, I know that there's been damage to the drywall and houses in Wilmington, which is about a quarter of, a third of a mile away, which to me is a cause for concern.
That is very odd. I mean, there's something, there's some issue, because what they, usually, what they'll do, so when you go out and you get a permit, the blasting companies are required by law to put in place insurance. So what ends up happening is you have what they call a survey, for lack of a better term, it's literally a survey. So they go out and they go to each of the areas where they believe will be affected, and they put in a seismic detector, literally something that measures the amount of the shake, if you will, and in addition to that, they videotape people's properties to see what the impacts are, and that's how they determine if there is any issue, and then if there is, there's already an insurance policy put in place by the blasting companies. It isn't anything we even require, it's what's required by the law.
So my other question is, is there any notification requirement that you would be having for the other, the business, the other businesses along Fordham Road, and also the residents that are kind of within earshot? Because I know, at least for the ledges project, the neighbors in the area are getting a notification a day or so ahead of time that a blast is gonna occur somewhere between 1:00 and 1:30 in the afternoon, or something like that, because especially, well, not just especially, but for businesses, certainly, it could be disruptive if someone has a client meeting and all of a sudden there's a sound of an explosion that's going on, and for residents, if they're not expecting the sound of an explosion going on, that certainly could be startling as well.
They do get notice that there's going to be blasting over a period of time, but let me give you an example of how loud it's not. I have literally a site blasting right next door to me, and they're blasting somewhere in the vicinity of 20,000 yards. It's huge, it's a huge hill, and there's a dog kennel right next door, and the dogs don't mind. It's not, it's one surgical blast, it's not that bad, but people do get notice, so it wouldn't be disruptive at all, as long as you've been told, look, you're gonna have blasting over a period of time, which we would absolutely do, because you're right, all of a sudden you hear some loud noise and you don't have frame of reference, so yes, there'll be notice given.
So, I guess, with what level of specificity? Is it, there's gonna be blasting that occurs at some point in March, or is it...
It'll be, look, we're gonna be blasting for these two weeks.
Okay, and you might have referenced...
Sometimes they put out a tone, you know, they do, I don't know, it's called a tone, so you have like a whoop, I don't know what to call it, what do you call it, siren?
There is a tone, and where this blasting occurs, or at least the bulk of it, is between two existing buildings out on this particular property. So to Turning Man's point, the size of the charges that they use to take out the rock is substantially different than if you were blasting to clear a roadway in an undeveloped area, or something like that. So it is, it's in a very sensitive area, so the charges are quite low.
Okay. And approximately, how long do you expect the blasting to occur? So, two weeks?
Well, I, how long, I mean, is it all in one area?
It's in two areas, so there's an initial phase, which they estimate, I don't even believe it's two weeks of blasting, I think it's a week to a week and a half of blasting in the first phase, and then a little bit later on, that there'll be, when they're in a different phase, there'll be another period of a week to two weeks of blasting. And when I say week to two weeks of blasting, they usually do a charge, you know, mid-morning and then early afternoon, so there's only two blasts, if you will, per day, because after they blast, they then have to remove the material, excavate it, re-drill, blast, et cetera, so it takes, you know, you can only do a few a day.
Okay.
Just to, just to, suggestion on Mr. Eaton's concerns, I'm sure we could probably get, if you know that two weeks you're doing the blasting, and maybe the approximate time of that show, we could probably get it on cable, I see Sean Neville's here, announce it on cable, we could probably get it on the town website, and I don't know if you can even pinpoint with the, what is it, a reverse call, sometimes I get a reverse call that says the DPW's doing work on Woburn Street, you know, to avoid that area, maybe have a phone call announcement that there'll be a blast, just so people are aware of that.
Yeah, I think if we know, if we can, we can coordinate when you're looking to do that, what the timeframe is, we can certainly put it on our website.
And we'll know, I mean, the blasting company has to come in and they have to identify, so it's not like we won't have advance notices, it's not like, oh, this guy's free, we're gonna do it today, that's not how it will work, so we could do that easily.
Yeah, if you would let us know, I think it'd be great.
Yeah, of course we will.
Mr. Kira offers up a great suggestion, I also would like to notify our fire department of when it's gonna take place.
They issue the permit, they're the ones...
So they'll know exactly when it happens.
I think they have to be, don't they have to be on site?
They have to be on site.
They have to be on site for every blast.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify something, you said it's not like it used to be, you don't feel it. You're right, you don't feel it. I mean, no, you don't hear it, but you feel it. I live in an area where they blast every day at 1:00, you think they woke up Elvis and he's shaking, rattling, rolling.
Really?
You know what I'm saying? So for you to say, and I'm supported, but you don't hear it, but you feel, you feel the vibration, you feel the blast, absolutely, it's an aftershock. I'm just surprised you'd say something like that.
Because I don't feel it when it goes off next to me, literally, two doors down, and I don't feel it.
Okay, and you're lucky, you're lucky to know.
I'm lucky, maybe, yeah.
I just thought I'd mention that.
No, I mean, you know, if, there is, obviously, something must happen, because we do have to put seismic meters on things?
Yeah.
So there's something.
I just thought I'd mention it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can't get the Funky Bunch song out of my head now, thank you, Mr. McCoy. The list of butters that are attached to this that got noticed, can I just inquire if any of them reached out to the town, or are any of them here tonight?
Up next, we're gonna go to the audience, but to answer your question, Mr. Holt?
I have not heard from any of the butters.
Okay. And this would be the same list that would be utilized for any notifications of blasting or anything else that the neighbors would...
We can use that list for the reverse 911.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna notify, the butters have been notified, we're gonna put it out in the media outlets, and our public safeties officials will know. Are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay, this is a public hearing, go to the audience, would anybody like to be heard on this particular topic? Okay, seeing none, we will move forward. I'm sorry? Yes, we're gonna, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
A motion's been made by someone, and seconded by Mrs. Omahony.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor closing the public hearing? It's unanimous, okay? And now we will go ahead and take a vote to issue the permit. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we grant the permit as described by the town manager.
I would second the motion with the amendment that it include the conditions of Mr. Woods and Mr. Looney's memo.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second with amendments, that also includes the previous discussion that we had?
Correct, just that that approval, the permit, would include the conditions as outlined in the memo of February 19th that Mr. Woods and Mr. Looney put together.
Any further discussion? You good, Jeff?
Yes, yep.
Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, best of luck, thank you very much.
And, Mr. Holt, we'll be in touch, just to coordinate all of them, you know? Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Okay, our second appointment, we're just four minutes behind, my apologies, is with Mr. Jamie McGoldy, Operations Manager of the DPW here in town for the second meeting in a row. We're pleased to have you with us for a public hearing to amend the flammable license from underground storage to the above-ground storage for the property located at 135 Andover Street. Jamie, good evening, thank you for being here.
Good evening again, everybody. For the viewers at home, I'm Jamie McGoldy, I'm the Operations Manager for the Wilmington DPW. I'm here tonight to request an amendment to our existing 1987 license to store flammable material at the DPW yard relative to two 10,000-gallon fuel tanks on the property. These tanks provide fuel for all town vehicles and police and fire equipment. I see this mainly as a housekeeping issue. Our existing license, which was in 1987, refers to our tanks as underground storage tanks, also known as USTs. If you recall, town meeting last year, Article 12 allocated construction funding to replace those existing underground storage tanks to above-ground stale double-walled tanks, and happy to say that that work was done this past winter, and we received a permit from the fire department to operate those tanks on January 15th of this year. And so, again, this is really administrative, as far as I can see, housekeeping, we're just trying to change that existing verbiage on the license from above-ground tank, I'm sorry, from underground tanks over to above-ground tanks. There is some reference on the existing 1987 license to an existing 2,500-gallon fuel oil tank, which is no longer on the property, so while this license is open for editing, would also like to strike that from the license itself. That tank was removed in 2012, when public buildings converted us over to natural gas. So in summary, we're just looking to change the verbiage from underground storage tanks on this license over to above-ground tanks, and also remove the reference to the 2,500-gallon fuel oil tank.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, this is a public hearing as well, go to the audience, would anyone like to be heard on this particular issue? With that, we'll take a vote to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, closing the public hearing? It's unanimous, thank you. And now we'll call for the vote, would anyone like to offer a motion for Mr. McGoldy?
So moved.
Motion's been made?
Second.
And seconded, thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Jamie, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck. Next up, we are pleased to welcome our friends from the Sons of Italy, and if they'd like to come forward. We, tonight, were fortunate to have our friends from the Sons of Italy here for a presentation of donation for Yentel Farm recreational facility. Good evening, come on up.
I don't know if we need a sitter.
However you're comfortable. Mr. Romano, good evening, I see...
I have a few of my colleagues with me.
Please.
A few members that are on the board here as well, so, Mr. Chairman, we have, I have with me tonight is Jerry Poopa, who's a former president of the Wilmington Sons of Italy, Alicia Johnson, who's a current trustee, Mr. Lenny Malvone, who's a current trustee, and also a member of the Board of Directors, Jerry is as well, and myself, I'm the current president, and, you know, amongst your colleagues, Mr. Kira, Mr. McCoy, and Mrs. Omahony, who are members of the Sons of Italy. And we have tonight with us a check for $50,000, the second installment to top off the $100,000 for the pavilion at the Yentel Farm, so we're ecstatic to present this check tonight to yourself and to the town manager, Mr. Holt, to pay off our commitment that we made a couple of years ago for that beautiful facility over at Yentel Farm. So, if you guys'd like to come up, I don't know how you wanna do this, but...
Absolutely, we're even more ecstatic to receive it, and we wanna thank you and your organization for all your generosity, particularly with this project and everything else you do in our community. We all know how much you folks do to contribute to our children, you know, the uniforms for the sports teams, and this wonderful pavilion now at the park, which everybody can enjoy, and just countless other ventures that your organization takes on, and so we're very, very grateful for this, and we're so excited and for your group to be here tonight and to accept this very generous donation, so...
It's our pleasure, and so, over the, I'd say over the last 18 or 19 years or so, we're probably about $1.5, $1.6 million in donations through, you know, to the town, various agencies and groups within the town, and also a little bit beyond, you know, through the Sons of Italy itself, scholarships, et cetera, so, you know, it's something that we do, we pride ourselves on, not only as the Wilmington Sons of Italy, but as the entire organization, and so, again, we're pleased to make this contribution, so...
Great, I hope my colleagues can join me up front.
If you wanna come up, maybe you can get a nice little picture.
Keep the checks coming, and...
Do you want to answer?
Yes, please, but before we do that, we'd like to present you with a citation from the town, and if I can just read it as we gather here. It reads, from the town of Wilmington, "A certificate of appreciation presented to the Wilmington Sons of Italy in grateful recognition for their generous donation to fund the pavilion at the Yentel Farm recreational facility, and with sincere gratitude for their continued generosity to the town of Wilmington, presented this day, the 24th day of February 2020, presented by myself, offered by myself and the press of water selection." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is more than $49, can I touch it? Thank you very much. Can we, maybe we need to slide this way? Can we, maybe we need to slide this way, to make sure we can get everybody...
Slide down just a little.
Slide down.
Yeah, we might have to give...
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me go, okay, wait a second. Guys, we'll pick this up.
We've got 15 minutes for the presentation.
Absolutely. Take all the time you want, get your time, take your time, we're gonna get a good picture.
Jerry, move in.
Don't bite Jerry.
He has not robbed of the opportunity.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Lenny, very much, I'm one of the people, thank you so much, really appreciate it.
And I might add that, Mr. Kyra is the president of the Ron Kyler Board of Trustees. He has a good hand in his self on both ends.
Do you have any other comments?
We have the Easter Bunny, Breakfast with the Easter Bunny, April 5th, and we have, actually on March 7th, we are doing an event called Dancing Through the Decades. It'll be at the Wilmington Pittsburgh Elks, and it's at 7 o'clock, and it's, we're raising money and collecting diapers for an organization called Gifts of Love. And so, if anybody would like to come, that's $20, and all the money and the diapers that we collect are voted this group, who gives out diapers to families and mothers that the state doesn't really fund, stuff like that, so this is a way for us to help.
That's about so.
March 7th.
Yes.
It's a Wilmington-based organization.
Yes.
It's a Hall of Starks.
And then the Easter Bunny's coming in April, we can go to that, the Kids of Love, so we'll be there.
Yes, they do.
Thank you again, thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
I'm handing this over to Jeff.
Mr. Chair, if I could, just before they leave, I would just like to note...
Sure.
Some of the different...
Come on, we've got some other nice things to say about them.
I'm sorry, Jeff.
Come in.
Sorry, I just...
The check, no, no.
I just wanted to, just wanted to make note, I went back and looked at some of the types of donations that the Sons of Italy has made over time, and it's really striking to me just the range of contributions that the Sons have made to the town over the years. So some of the things that the Sons have done include purchasing of a police cruiser, fire chief vehicle, playground equipment for the North Intermediate School, the Welcome to Wilmington sign, bocce courts at the senior center, an elderly services minivan, paid for renovations at the Town Common gazebo, purchased two thermal imaging cameras for the fire department, purchased forestry skid pump for the fire department, and paid for the lenses that you see on the Town Common, in this case, in green to honor our veterans. So, those are just some of the things that the Sons have done over the years for the town, and it's just an amazing group of people that really, you know, Wilmington is fortunate in having so many groups that look out for the town, but certainly the Sons are right at the top. Thank you.
Absolutely. And Sean, if you could, please extend our sincerest gratitude to all of your membership, we really appreciate that. I know probably if everybody came, we couldn't fit them in this room, but we really appreciate all the work that you do and we wish you well with all your future endeavors.
Thank you. We have a meeting Thursday night, a large meeting, I will present this and I will pass your thanks on to the membership.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening. Wow. That's excellent. Okay, we're a bit ahead of schedule, without objection, we'll move forward. Our 7:45 appointment is with the gentleman who I see is in there in the audience tonight. He is the executive director of Wilmington Community Television, here in town at WCTV, Director Sean Neville is with us to give us an update on WCTV's programs and activities. Mr. Neville, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me, and no objection to getting up early here. Let me see, I have a short, a few slides here tonight, just to kind of walk through some points, but just, you know, thank you all for having me tonight, giving the opportunity to update you about what goes on over at WCTV. You know, I think most people in town, and certainly everyone sitting out here knows who we are and what we do in the community, but it's always nice to kind of talk about the scope of what we do, even though it's limited presentation that I'll be giving. Quickly, an update on the station, last year, WCTV was home to more than 500 locally-produced pieces of content in 2019, so I'll do some quick math for you, there's about 10, 10 new videos and audio files a week that come from either our members, our youth, or our staff. We covered 90 live events last year, we average a couple live events a week, whether they be meetings, we do all the concerts up at the high school, we do a bunch of sports, from football, basketball, baseball, in between. About 40% of our productions are member-produced, these are studio shows, events, church services, we do a lot of church services in town, our members, I said, should do those. The St. Thomas Masses, United Methodist Church, Abundant Life also submits their programming. And we're certainly a platform for all of that, and so people can use WCTV to air their programming. And then I have a note on here, last year we did 50 podcasts. This is something that is really growing in popularity among our members, we have, I believe about 10 podcast producers right now from the community. These are mostly member-produced programming, a variety of topics, from healthcare to technology and some other sports podcasts, and it's kind of an alternative to TV. A lot of people are camera shy, don't like to be on TV, they can jump in a podcast booth and produce something for 30 minutes, and we try to distribute that as best as we can. I think you know we don't get ratings at WCTV, TV ratings, Nielsen doesn't care too much about non-commercial programming like ours, but we do measure online views, we measure anything that people watch for at least 30 seconds, we track that. Last year, we had more than 83,000 views through our various outlets, through our YouTube channel, our website, through our app. That number is double what it was just a couple of years ago, certainly a lot more people are watching the content online, we post a lot of things to Facebook and Twitter, and people are certainly watching that. Sports is very popular, we get a lot of people who watch sports, and believe it or not, it's not, you know, necessarily just football games and basketball games I think you'd think of. When we cover cross-country, it's very popular, when we cover the swim team, very popular, you know, that's part of an organized effort of ours to make sure that all the varsity teams get coverage, and the viewership shows that there's interest across the board, it's not just those traditional televised sports that get people to watch. As all of you know up here, election programming is important for us, it's one of the most-watched things that we do throughout the year, and then some studio shows that we do to try to highlight some groups and some people in the community and show that. So even if they don't do a studio show themselves, they can use us to get their message out there, and then we facilitate those. We have a year-round emphasis on our youth program, we run after-school programs, we do weekend programs, we do summer programs. Our summer program for this upcoming summer is already almost booked, we opened it about a week and a half ago, and our five weeks are just about full right now, so those have certainly grown. We do a lot of student programming up at the high school, like I said, from sports to graduation to concerts, and then we work with a number of youth groups, whenever a Girl Scout or a Cub Scout group is, calls us and looks for some help on getting a badge, or they wanna have their group come in for a tour, we're happy to accommodate, to accommodate those folks, so that's kind of what we're up to and what we're doing these days. Want to kind of pivot a little bit, that's kind of what is all, you know, growing for us. I also want to, you know, touch upon tonight, some of the short-term and long-term funding challenges that the station faces. 95% of WCTV's funding comes from cable license agreements, these are license agreements with Verizon and Comcast with the town. The remainder comes from our youth program fees, we do charge small fees relative for those youth programs. We do a bunch of business sponsorships in town where someone can sponsor a football game, or they can sponsor one of our programs, and then we do some donations. But from 2015 to 2018, Wilmington lost about 344 cable households. I don't need to tell you that we don't have fewer homes in Wilmington than we did three or four years ago, these people are cutting the cord, they are going to streaming alternatives, they are watching on an antenna. It's about a 5% decline in cable households over that time. That's through 2018, the state tracks this data, that's the latest number available, we're gonna get the 2019 data probably next month. We expect that graph to kind of continue in that general direction, in a downward turn, as more people turn to streaming alternatives. So what has this meant for WCTV's funding? From 2017 to 2019, so over the past two years, our franchise fees that came in to support WCTV, again, that supports the bulk of our funding, has been down about 7%. So far in 2020, we're on pace for about a 3% decline, and the bottom line here is that after decades of growth, which is good, because it's created the station that we currently have, you know, we're now faced with these funding declines that are being measured in the tens of thousands of dollars, so it has presented some budget challenges in the short term, and then just kind of looking to see if cable continues to decline, the funding will continue to decline with it. So it is some, some challenges, is, we try to manage, you know, what we do for the station. There were some recent budget surpluses, we've built kind of a small reserve, working with the Board of Directors, and that's gonna offset some of those shortfalls in the short term, but it's not a giant pile of money that the station is sitting on, and so we're trying to manage that over the next couple of years. Just want to kind of talk about issues for the future. There was an effort at the State House to get a new funding model in place, I mentioned the cable license agreements, so internet is not part of that, phones are not part of that, it's just the cable revenue, so it's just when people subscribe to cable. There was a bill that had 80-plus cosponsors at the State House, we were lucky enough that Representatives Robertson and Gordon were both cosponsors, that said these new streaming alternatives would be held to the same standards as traditional cable, with funding for community television and actually funding for municipalities. That appears to be shelved just within the last week and a half or two weeks or so up at the State House, trying to figure out some more information, but that had broad support, trying to figure out what happened. What does the future of cable look like? WCTV isn't just a cable TV station anymore, I think you all know that, we've got a mobile app, we've got a Roku channel, we do social media heavy, so we don't want people to rely necessarily on having cable television, it's kind of a catch-22, because the more we offer our services away from cable, we make people less reliant on cable, but we really want to reach as many people in the community as possible, and so that's just a core mission of what we are. And then finally, just, you know, what's, WCTV services are vital to the community. I'll stress that the station is not going away tomorrow, you know, the people who booked their summer programs this summer, we're gonna be there for them, but I think it's a conversation for our Board of Directors to have and the town to have in the future about, you know, what is important about WCTV and the community, and right now, the center is kind of built to adapt to those changes, and will continue to adapt over time, but it's certainly something that I want to take the opportunity tonight to make sure all of you are kind of aware of those challenges that are right along the horizon or right at the horizon for the organization right now, as we try to figure things out in the future. So, started with a lot of the good things, a little bit of a downer there at the end, but know that the, that the station, again, isn't going away right now, and it's got a good group of people behind it right now, who are, who are going to adapt to these, to these changes moving forward.
Great, thank you. Keeping with your theme, keeping us very informed, we appreciate you being here, I think if you could just go back to the last slide there, I think you may have missed one issue that is facing this town going forward, and that is that you've let us know that you'll be departing WCTV, I don't know if you wanted to comment on that, if you're comfortable you are?
Yeah, my last day will be in a few weeks here, I've been here for just over four years, I think we've accomplished a lot over that time of moving on to kind of some different challenges, new challenges. I'll be joining a communications team up at a nonprofit hospice provider, based out of Danvers, and working on their comms team up there, so it's certainly different, but it's also something, you know, it's an organization that does some good, and it certainly fits in line with the work that I was looking to do. So, I wish everybody here the best of luck in these conversations going forward, and know, again, that the team that we have in place right now is solid, and it can keep the good work that we've been doing.
Well, we'll be sorry to see you go, there's no question that you've enhanced WCTV and certainly enhanced our community for all your efforts here, we're really appreciative. I know my colleagues might have some comments, and we'll, I'll conclude, does anybody have any comments or questions on an update from WCTV?
Go ahead.
Mr. Eaton.
Mr. Neville, it's, really is always a pleasure, I think very, very highly of you, I think the work that you have done with the employees and volunteers at WCTV in the short time that you've been there is absolutely incredible. I think a vibrant community media organization is, from a government perspective, a necessary partner in improving government transparency, and I know that WCTV has certainly opened the doors to several organizations in town to help get out some of the initiatives that they've done. I, I think it's a testament to your professionalism that even though you are going to be leaving WCTV, you spent a good portion of your presentation here tonight advocating on, on how important WCTV is and some of the challenges that it will need to have addressed in the future, because I do think that WCTV does provide an awful lot to this community. I think you have tangibly improved the community, which is no surprise, knowing your family very well, that, that community service and community involvement has been very much a part of your time at WCTV. Again, I think it's a big loss for the station, but you have shown yourself to be someone who's very successful, and I have no doubt that your next challenge, you will bring that same magic touch, if you will, to it, so best of luck in the future, I'm sure you won't be a stranger, but, yeah, best of luck.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
So in the interest of full disclosure, I am on the WCTV board, and I still won't accept the fact that Sean's leaving, so I'm not gonna say too many nice things to you tonight, Sean, but I will say how much I appreciate all that you've done in the past four years. The programming obviously has changed significantly, I think the viewership has increased so much because of your thoughtfulness and your staff's thoughtfulness and what you're now producing. You know, I hate the idea that we have a change coming, and I know, you know, we always have to adapt and change with it, so I'm gonna wish you well begrudgingly, but, and I will find you to still embarrass you and harass you, but I think it's a good opportunity to also point out, you know, people at home are watching us right now because of WCTV. These will be available on the WCTV's website, you know, within hours. The app notified me that the Board of Slackman's meeting was about to begin a little bit before 7 o'clock, and I think, you know, as we've been saying for the past year, if not more, you know, it's time to start supporting this, this media outlet that has been supporting the town, and I do think if we're gonna have to deal with change, it would be great to also deal with some new board members, to deal with some new sponsorships, to deal with some, some more community support. I see Mike is in the audience as well, another board member is here. I think, you know, now is the time to, to make sure that we're supporting an organization that clearly is an asset to the town, and clearly is something that we rely on, not just to see our kids play a game, but, you know, to watch the finance committee meetings when we can't get there, and, and all of the great things that, that you've accomplished and added value to, so we appreciate that, and we will miss you, and we thank you so much for all that you've done.
Thank you.
Mr. McCoy.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, Sean, I wish you all the best of luck in your future endeavors, I know you have a professional staff, including yourself and the people that work under you, but you have a lot of great volunteers that step up to the plate, they show all kinds of programming, my colleague could put it better than I could, but I remember when you first got the job there, and I would say, Ace, Chris Neville there, is it Chris? And I'm sure you heard that a few times, 'cause that's your dad.
Only a couple of times over the last 10 years?
Yeah, but I was probably there a couple of times, but anyway, I know, and who's Chris, that's your dad, he's outstanding police officer lieutenant in the town, and I remember him quite well, and he's a fantastic guy, and a couple of times I have to apologize, I called you Chris a few times, but I will call you Mr. Neville tonight, I really wish you all the best, and for you and your family, and I think you've done well in this community, and just want to wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Sean, I echo my colleagues' comments. Professionalism, the guidance that you brought to the cable TV in Wilmington, from, you're from Wilmington, I mean, you embody that, and that's important. Not that the next person won't do the same, but you brought that little flair of being a part of Wilmington and the family, as a part of Wilmington residents. Tireless worker that you are, that really did so much for the WCTV, made it what it is, really. The political show that you put on, it's like I'm sitting at home and watching a professional performance. It's just amazing that I watch the sports on TV, and sometimes I catch a selectmen's meeting, but try to avoid that. But I just, congratulations. All the best. It's going to be our loss, certainly their gain, and I wish you the best in any future endeavor, and hopefully it will circle back and you'll be in charge of WCTV in the future, with HD and all the stuff that goes with it.
We'll see, we'll see.
Mr. Hall.
A lot of it's already been said, but certainly the professionalism that you and I have had great dealings over the years, and it's always been very complimentary and cooperative, and I've appreciated your insights in terms of the cable business, so to speak, and certainly, as it's been previously mentioned, the level, the scale of operations, so to speak, has really been greatly enhanced. You know, in this day and age, in spite of all the media out there, you don't have the larger news outlets covering communities like Wilmington and the surrounding communities like local access does. So there's clearly an important role for local access to play, and I've been privileged to have that working relationship with you, so good luck.
Thank you. And I'll just say, it's, it's not like this in a lot of other towns. It can be adversarial sometimes between community media centers and the Board of Selectmen or the town administration. That's never been an issue here, you know. There's, it's always been a partnership, you know, between us, working with the community, and so I certainly appreciate all of your support over the years in making this happen, because I don't take it for granted, because it's not the case everywhere, so thank you.
And having known your family growing up, too, I know, I just saw your dad at Market Basket on Sunday, and I know how proud your mom and dad are. And your dad, when I saw him in the grocery store, looked like he had been there for at least an hour and a half, fielding questions from people. Where's Sean going? Where's Sean going? And I went to school with your sister, and she was always very bright and very impressive, so it's not a surprise that when I got to know you over the last couple of years, it was exactly the same with her older brother. So we really appreciate all that you've done. I think that your station is the envy of the stations in this area, having tuned into a couple of them more than I'd like to admit. There's no question that you've enhanced it. You know, Mrs. Omohony mentioned that, you know, this meeting will probably be on Twitter and Facebook tomorrow, within a couple of hours, and that's incredible. And the fact that someone could go in and break down a portion of the meeting and click right to where they want to see is incredible, and the technology enhances that you've made is just fantastic, and we're very appreciative of all that. And we've all been the subject of one of your candidates' night during the debates, and I won't admit to you how nervous, nerve-wracking that was for us, but we really do an incredible job of covering elections and hot-button issues. Anytime there's been a hot-button issue, you guys seem to come out with the perfect timing of a clip that kind of clarifies and helps inform the community, so we're really appreciative of that. And we wish you well, and you have a young family, and we wish you all the best. And so if I may, we have a small gift for you as well. I'd like to present you with a citation, if you don't mind, coming up. We'll make sure we get you right on WCTV.
I hope so. I hope it's being broadcast.
Step right over here, because these guys will yell at me. All right. This certificate of recognition presented to Sean C. Neville in recognition of his service to the residents of Wilmington through public educational or government local access programming. We are grateful for his dedicated service to the town and for his positive impact he's made on the community television. We wish him success in the future endeavors. It's presented this 24th day of February 2020, presented by myself on behalf of all the members of the Board of Selectmen. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Best of luck.
Sure, we'll see you again at the point of our
I hope so.
Take care.
Thank you. All right. Big shoes to fill. Big shoes. I also want to recognize Mr. Burns. Mike Burns is in the audience. Appreciate you being here.
Robert Hayes. I don't know if it's supposed to be
Robert Hayes is also on the board there. WCTV and a lot of good volunteers over there. Next up, eight o'clock appointment is just a few minutes ahead of schedule. A review of the annual town meeting warrant articles submitted by petition. Mr. Hall.
Yes, so I will just briefly highlight the petition articles. We have one article to rezone from general business to residential. Our 20 parcel at 7, map 79, parcel 11A, five, Shady Lane Drive. You may recall, this is the former Wilson Wolf establishment. Also, we have a second petition article, appropriate funds relative to the construction of a senior center. Map 54, parcel 110, which is the site here, 121 Glen Road. Another article to appropriate funds relative to the construction of a senior center. Map 45 parcels, 142A, B, C, D, E, and F, which is the Main Street property next to the St. Dorothy's Church. We have a rezoning proposal, residential rezoning from residential 6D to highway industrial. Series of parcels, map R1, parcels 1, 1A, and 2A. Map 2, parcel 19A. Map 103, parcels 24 and 24A. These are all properties off of 125, right at the off-ramp there from 93. Then we have a proposal for rezoning from general business and general industry to neighborhood mixed use. Map 71, parcels 3 and 5, 100 and 102 West Street. And then the final petition proposal is to amend the inhabitant bylaws, establish a section 55 prohibit participation of certain animals in traveling animal acts for public entertainment or amusement.
And it's worth noting that these and all the articles will be discussed and thoroughly vetted on March 17th at the Joint Finance and Planning Board meeting, open to the public, obviously, right here at Town Hall Auditorium, 7:00 PM. And again, I'm sure that will come up under important dates. Next up, we have a discussion for the annual town meeting, nonpetition warrant articles. Mr. Hall.
So before you is a draft of the warrant with the petition and nonpetition articles. As we start out, obviously, Article 1 is with reference to the elections and the town meeting date. Article 2 is to hear reports of committees or act thereon. I don't anticipate, do not anticipate any reports to be presented at this town meeting. Article 3, to appropriate and transfer from available funds, sum of money for the purpose of paying unpaid bills. I do not anticipate any at this point.
Mr. Hall, if I could interrupt. Did you have the dollar mouse as we go forward?
I will.
Okay, great, thank you.
Article 4 is the banking article, authorized as a treasurer collector to engage in banking. Article 5 is the omnibus article, if you will, that seeks to have appropriations for all the various departments, school and town, and the Shawshin Tech. Article 6 is to appropriate funds for purchase of certain vehicles. So I'll start with the police department. This would be the purchase of four replacement police cruisers in the amount of $190,000. Also, under the fire department, the purchase of one replacement utility vehicle in the amount of $52,700. Again, fire department retrofit one forest, forestry vehicle with flatbed body, skid pump, upgrade the suspension, and the amount is $32,250. Under Department of Public Works, purchase of one vacuum sweeper to be assigned to the highway division, the amount of $280,000. One heavy-duty six-wheel dump truck with plow and sander, $155,000. One heavy-duty one-ton utility body truck with plow to be assigned to highway for $85,000. One heavy-duty three-quarter-ton pickup truck with plow to be assigned to Parks and Grounds, And then under the school department, one replacement handicapped accessible wheelchair minivan in the amount of $56,000. Article 7 is for the appropriation of funds for portable radios for the fire department, and this is in the amount of $39,000. Next is for appropriation of a power loader. This is for the ambulance in the amount of $32,000. Looking for a sum of money for the information technology department for backup appliance for data storage and recovery in the amount of $100,000. Next is to, sum of money for purchase of new portable radios for the police department, Article 11, appropriate funds for the purchase of new police patrol rifles in the amount of $28,000. Article 12 is the upgrade of a critical radio communication infrastructure and equipment in the public safety building, a public safety center, a dispatch center. This is in the amount of $450,000, and it's proposed from free cash. Article 13 is to replace furnishings and equipment in the public safety dispatch center in the amount of $194,000. Article 14 is to complete a feasibility study and schematic design to hire and own as project manager for the replacement of the Bazell Senior Center in the amount of $650,000, proposed from free cash. Article 15, similar type of project, to complete a feasibility study and schematic design and to hire and own as project manager for construction of a town hall slash school administration building in the amount of $955,000, proposed from free cash. Next is to replace a portion of the interior and exterior lighting at the West Intermediate School. This is actually Phase 2, for $100,000. Article 17, to replace ceiling tiles at the West Intermediate School. This is in the amount of $360,000. We're looking to replace the existing limited-use, limited-application, or so-called Lula lift at the West Intermediate School in the amount of $79,000. Article 19 is to continue the process of paving. This is reconstruction of a portion of the parking lot at the Woburn Street School in the amount of $210,000. Article 20, to restore an existing culvert crossing under Middlesex Ave at the approximate location of 290 Middlesex in the amount of $80,000. Article 21 is to continue the sidewalk work on Lawrence Street, between Lawrence Street and Middlesex Avenue, in the amount of $50,000. Article 22 is to purchase or otherwise acquire property, abutting the Wildwood Cemetery, and this is in the amount of $450,000, would be taken from free cash, proposed from free cash. Article 23 is funding for the municipal separate storm sewer system requirements as part of the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, or NPTIs. This was talked about at the last meeting in the amount of $50,000. Article 24, transfer or appropriate funds for a school facilities and building planning study in the amount of $200,000.
How much is that?
$200,000.
And what is that? This is a new facility study for the school in the
This is, this would be just focused on the schools, looking at, really, a continuation of what was previously done as to whether there should be reconfiguration, consolidation, also more specifically dealing with the Wildwood School on a more shorter-term basis.
And we're not, we're engaging in what, a PDF to find a company to do this? We're not engaging with that CECL?
No, no. No, this would be probably an architectural firm, or firm that specializes in school, school upgrades.
And this is being proposed by the school committee?
Well, it's actually a combination of conversations between myself, George Hooper, the school superintendent, and his staff. The next Article 25 is to appropriate funds for the replacement of laptops, docking stations, and monitors at the Wilmington High School in the amount of $195,000. Article 26, replacing laptops, docking stations, monitors at the Boutwell, Wildwood, Shawshin, and Woburn Street Schools in the amount of $195,000. Article 27, replacement of projectors and interactive, with interactive projectors in the classrooms at the Boutwell, Wildwood, Shawshin, and Woburn Street Schools in the amount of $80,000. Article 28, replacing Wilmington Public School admin computers, laptops, $25,000. Article 29, funds for multi-year replacement of Chromebooks and Chromebook carts for the Wilmington Public Schools in the amount of $80,000. Article 30, to deposit funds in the other post-employment liability trust fund in the amount of $1 million.
Is that coming out of free cash?
It is not. Article 31 is to transfer from free cash, an amount of $2 million, for the capital stabilization Article 32 is to appropriate funds for early payment, advanced payment towards the Middlesex retirement system, as we have done in the last several years. This would be for $1.5 million.
Again, out of free cash?
No, this would be through general appropriation. Article 33 is the transfer article. We will have specifics on that as we get to town meeting, but this, as you know, is in the current fiscal year, instances where there are some budgets that we need to transfer money into, and other budgets that we can transfer money from. Article 34 is to seek to appropriate funds for the July 4th celebration in the amount of $50,000.
That's an increase from last year?
No, that's the same.
Was, I thought it was 25,000.
No, it's been 50 for the last couple of years, I believe.
Has it?
Yeah, it did go up, but... The next one is to fund the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day in the amount of $8,000. Article 36, to appropriate transfer funds for the Veterans of Foreign Wars Clubhouse in the American Legion. Actually, $750 is appropriated for, is recommended for both, although I believe the Veterans of Foreign Wars Group is for both, although I believe the Veterans of Foreign Wars Group is defunct at this point.
So, seven-hundred-and-fifty dol, hundred dol?
Seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars would be for American Legion. Next is Article thirty-seven, to raise and appropriate transfer money to operate the public rink enterprise, you'll recall, in this, there was a lot of discussion about this last year, the town is not actually appropriating funds, it is authorizing, in the event that the town were to go into business as a, and have a rink, the funds that would be generated from the sale of ice time would go into this enterprise fund, and the town would be authorized, if this was to pass, to expend up to five-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand out of that enterprise fund, so we are not looking to appropriate money out of the town's general revenue stream, it would be from the enterprise fund.
Jeff, just to be clear, the enterprise fund currently has what balance?
Zero, there's no, because we have, we don't have a rink, we don't have any revenue coming in from...
I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you, yeah, it's always a question that comes up every year, so I'm glad you clarified, thank you.
Article thirty-eight, these, these two items have been here for quite a number of years, we have a compost bin revolving account, the authorities' spending level would be forty-five hundred dollars, again, money comes in through the sale of the bins, and then the town would be authorized to expend up to forty-five hundred to purchase new bins. Similar subsurface sewer disposal upgrades, the maximum amount would be two-hundred thousand, there are loans that are established for people that cannot otherwise obtain replacements to their septic systems, as those loans are paid back, the fund, those funds go back into this revolving account, and this would authorize us to spend up to two-hundred thousand on additional loans. Article thirty-nine is to transfer funds from the Methyl Tertiary Butyl Ether Fund, this was a fund that was established based upon some settlements that were agreed to a number of years ago by several of the gasoline companies, not only in Wilmington, but in other places around the region, and the amount here is six-hundred thousand, which I believe is the remaining balance, and this will be used towards the Salem Street Well Field Rehab Project.
Is there an amount on that?
Six-hundred thousand.
Thank you.
This, next one, Article forty, is to vote to appropriate a sum of six-thousand-seventy-three dollars and seventy cents, this is from the Transportation Infrastructure Receipts Reserve Account, for the purpose of roadway surface crack sealing. These funds come to us once a year from the state. Article forty-one, this would be to vote to authorize transfer funds for the support of the Public Works Sewer Division Enterprise Fund, you'll recall, at last year's town meeting, the town agreed to establish a separate enterprise account, as opposed to the existing arrangement where funds were appropriated through the tax levy, the amount would be three-million-four-sixty-one-nine-sixty-three, that money is generated through the payment by residents and businesses that are tied into sewer, they pay, obviously, for a cost for that, and the budget includes the MWRE assessment, that's the largest portion of it, and then a small amount for one employee and some operating costs. The next one, Article forty-two, is the Peg Access Cable Related Special Revenue Fund, and the amount that's proposed here is six-hundred thousand, to be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen for Peg Access. For many years, the town, when funds came in from Verizon and Comcast, the funds went directly to WCTV, there was a change in the law, the last couple of years, and last year was the first year, in order to be in compliance with the law, that this particular revenue account was set up, so now the funds, which are paid quarterly, come to the town, and then the town cuts a check to WCTV, and as Sean noted, it's about ninety-five percent of their revenue. Article forty-three is to authorize the town to enter into a five-year agreement for curbside collection of trash and recycling, so currently, the restriction on multi-year contracts is three years, though there's some question, quite frankly, as to with trash and recycling being exempt from the procurement process, whether or not we needed to go through this process, it's the advice of current council that we seek approval for a five-year agreement, and so this would authorize that five-year agreement. And then similarly, Article forty-four, this is a vote to authorize a five-year agreement for the disposal of trash at the Waste-to-Energy Facility at Wheeler Brader in North Andover.
Do you have dollar figures on those?
Well, actually, the, we won't, the town meeting will not be voting on the dollar figures, it'll be voting to authorize the...
Just the extension.
The extension, right.
Okay.
The dollar amounts are actually incorporated into the DPW budget, will be taken up on Article Five. Article forty-five, this is to amend Chapter Two, Section One of the bylaws, inhabitant bylaws, changing the date of the annual town meeting to the last Saturday in April, and the annual town election to be scheduled for the Saturday prior to said, prior to that, the said section shall read as follows, "Annual Town Meeting Last Saturday in April and Annual Town Election Saturday Prior." Then, Section One, the annual town meeting shall be held on the last Saturday in April of each year, and the annual town election shall be held on the Saturday prior to the annual town meeting. Article forty-six, to see if the town will amend Chapter Two, Section Three of the bylaws, changing the time of the annual town meeting from ten-thirty AM to nine AM. Article forty-seven is to amend Chapter Two, Section Ten A of the bylaws, by including a, an overall omnibus budget presentation by the town manager, followed by taking up the operating budget as a whole, by inserting the following language in subsection five, which would read as follows, "To hear the omnibus budget presentation by the town manager, and then to appropriate monies for expenses of the town and salaries of town officers and departments, and determine how same shall be raised." Article forty-eight, to amend Chapter Two, Section Ten B of the bylaws, this is under the Order of Articles, it would read, "All articles in said warrant shall be enumerated by the Board of Selectmen, and shall be presented by the town, to the town meeting, by the moderator in the order as so enumerated." Article forty-nine, to amend Chapter Three, Section Six of the bylaws, and this relates to town council opinions, mandatory filing with the town clerk to bifurcate said opinions between matters subject to attorney-client privilege, and those matters of general interpretation that should be available to the public for the purpose of transparency and consistency in the application of the bylaw, and the language would read specifically as follows, "Whenever such opinion is given, he shall forthwith file a copy thereof with the town clerk for a permanent record, provided, however, that confidential and privileged communications shall be exempt from mandatory disclosure pursuant to applicable provisions of the Massachusetts Public Records Law." Article fifty, to see if the town will amend Chapter Five, Section twenty-seven point five of the bylaws, by deleting the language, quote, "Or town property adjacent to the water", end quote, this has to do with leashing of dogs.
Through the chair, we had a discussion on this, I recall that, that night, and I'm sorry I don't have my notes, but I thought we were going to bring this up for an amendment, only because there was a, there were dates, there were date ranges in there that were eliminated, that somehow is going to permit leashed dogs, I don't know, maybe unleashed dogs, on the beach itself, and I don't think that, the board didn't seem to be too enamored with that, understanding our idea. I forget the dates, I don't know if it was October to May or something, where, anybody recall?
I'm checking this in, the minutes.
We were going to try to change that language in here.
Okay.
We were going to do the amendment that night, but then it was said, oh, we'll do it when we get to the, to the draft warrants.
Yeah, seeing that this is the first reading of the draft here, and we're just getting the amounts, the dollar amounts for the first time, I think this is appropriate time to relook at any of these, if we have to.
The minutes read as is written in this, in the draft warrant, it does state that that was a, not a unanimous vote, it was, it was a three-two in favor of, but it doesn't specify whether or not there were any, there was any time limit to it, so it might be worthwhile to go back and watch.
I'll have to go back and look.
Yeah.
And I apologize that I'm going to make us go backwards for a minute, but I thought for Article fourteen, I had asked for an amendment, that there'd be some type of reporting, and I don't have my notes from that, but for the, the OPM would be regularly reporting kind of the progress of the studies for the, for the senior center, that it wouldn't just be kind of out there, because I know one of the concerns was how long would the study take, how long, you know, would it delay any type of plans, and I think I had asked that there'd be some type of regular reporting to the board, as to the progress.
That would be in the agreement with the OPM, right?
Yeah, I mean, it certainly would be part of the agreement, if, is that the language you want inserted in the article itself, regular reporting to the Board of Selectmen?
I think I had asked that we would make sure that the OPM that we utilized would have some type of reporting requirement to us, I don't know the exact, I don't have the exact verbiage that I had asked for, but I know I had asked that it be included, just so that we made sure it would be part of...
Could I suggest that that be part of the RFP, rather than putting it into the warrant language, I mean, it would, I think it would make sense to do that, but it would make sense to do it in the...
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I mean, I don't know if we're privy to the language of the, we don't vote on the language for the RFP, do we?
No, I mean, the RFP ultimately is...
Right, so I would just want to make sure that it's clear, that the expectation is, whoever's doing the feasibility study is going to give regular reports to the board as to the status of it.
Is it, obviously, we weren't here, but when they did the high school and other projects, Jeff, did the OPM report back to the town on, you know, timelines and progress?
Yeah, at that time, of course, we had the, the committee that was set up, that was comprised of the Permanent Building Committee and others that were, you know, was those group, that group met regularly, I think it was at least monthly, and the OPM attended all those meetings and, you know, reported progress as, as things took place. In this case, I would envision that the Permanent Building Committee would be the lead committee, if you will, that would be meeting on a regular basis with the OPM, you know, to get updates, but certainly, if the expectation is the Board of Selectmen, that the OPM meet with the Board of Selectmen on a regular basis as well, we can incorporate that into the scope of the work.
Yeah, whatever the pleasure of the board is, that's why we're here, so certainly, it's a good suggestion, there's a couple of different ways I think we can go about it, it can be included in the article itself, or it can be included in the RFP, however, we want to go about it.
And I just thought we, when we had discussed it, that that was what we had actually voted on, that that would be, the amendment would include regular reporting, it doesn't, they don't have to come in front of the board all the time, it's just to have regular updates, and I don't even know if we said to this board or the Elder Services Commission, I just think...
I believe it was both.
Yeah, I think we just wanted to make sure that there would be regular updates provided, so that no one would be worried that they wouldn't get any updates for, you know, half a year or whatever.
You want to word it as, so it would be, updates would be provided to the town?
That would be great.
That way, we're not specifying...
Yep, that's fine.
One group over the other.
Sorry to go backwards, I was holding that...
Nope, no, I recall, we were in the auditorium, and...
So, the intent would be to incorporate that into the article, so for fourteen and fifteen, that there would be regular reporting to the town?
Well, I don't think it was in fifteen that they...
Okay, just fourteen?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
But in fifteen...
I mean, it would make sense, it would make sense to do it for both.
Well, no, I'm saying, in the RFP, he's gonna, he's gonna, he or she is gonna, or they are going to give updates.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, a standard practice, as, you know, part of their role to provide updates to the town, whether, you know, I guess it becomes a question of who we have them providing those up to, reports to, and whether they're, they could be in the form of a written communication, and typically, it's, in the past, it's been a combination of written communication as well as in-person meetings.
Yeah, the other thing is, what, what frequency, right?
Right.
We'll have to negotiate, are they given weekly, bi-weekly, monthly, daily, you know, so we'll have to negotiate that, that's why I think we should put updates to the town, you know, so we're not specifying which group, and we can negotiate that through the RFP process, but it accomplishes what she's trying to get at.
Okay, so, but for purposes of these articles, we are going to make reference in the article to this regular reporting to the town, correct? Just, I want to be clear, because...
I think that's my understanding of what the discussion is right now.
So, fourteen and fifteen will be amended?
Yes.
Thank you.
And just heading back to the article forty...
Fifty, I think we were on fifty.
Fifty, excuse me.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure, Mr. Kyrie, comfortable? You had a question on this one, right?
Yeah, I don't...
Okay, so, we're going to go back, it sounds like we need to go back and watch the tape.
Discussion.
It was a lengthy discussion, I don't expect anybody to remember every word that was said, so certainly, I think it will help our friends from WCTV to review exactly how we wanted that word.
Okay, sure, so was, was, the question was whether or not certain timeframes should be altered, was that the issue? I...
Yeah, I believe that there was a timeframe, it, it came down to, you know, I don't have a problem with the, the dogs being adjacent to, to the water, but I think that there was something that was eliminated that now allowed the dogs on the beach, you know, on the sand of the beach.
I don't think there's never been a attempt to...
And I didn't think, no?
I don't think it was.
You said no dogs on the beach, I mean...
I don't think there's any dogs allowed on the beach, and, you know, specifically during the, no dogs allowed.
No, I think, I think Mr. Kyrie, I remember, because I think it said something like May to October, and we wanted to make sure it was clarified, that that was, that the beach access was year-round, like, the restriction on the beach access was year-round, and that the May to October was in the adjacent, I think I remember that, it was something like May to October, but I remember.
Yeah, I think it went October to May, that they would be allowed on the beach, and I think we wanted year-round, and they shouldn't be allowed on the beach.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll go back and take a look at exactly the wording.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody good there? All right, fifty-one, Jeff.
I won't go through this one in great detail, but this is the article to amend the bylaws to establish a construction noise bylaw. Article fifty-two is to adopt certain provisions of the, this is the so-called Brave Act, adopt provisions of Chapter fifty-nine, and essentially grant certain benefits to guardians or family members of veterans. Next, Article fifty-three, to vote to name the Wilmington High School Music Room, the Barbara J. Meddy Music Room. Article fifty-four, to authorize the Superintendent of Wilmington Public Schools... Music Room. Article 54, to authorize the superintendent of Wilmington Public Schools with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Department of Children and Families, the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, in order to obtain federal Title IV E reimbursement for foster care transportation, and to provide the payments for such foster care transportation under the MOU may be made from such reimbursements as a result of foster care and transportation being performed without appropriation of said reimbursements pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, Section 70.
Mr. Hall, I just wanna note for the record that as an employee of the state, and specifically the Department of Children and Family, I would be obviously abstaining from any discussion or vote on, on that particular article.
Thank you.
Article 55 would be to name the outdoor seating area at the Memorial Library, the Peggy Cane Reading Garden. Article 56 is to vote to amend the zoning map with regard to certain parcels of property, Map 83, and there's a slew of parcels here, but this are, most of this property is off of Salem Street in the McDonnell Road area, and it would be to rezone from residential 60 to residential 20. This is being recommended by the Planning Board. Article 57, to see if the town will vote to amend the bylaws to address comprehensive stormwater management. And again, this is intended to update the stormwater bylaw as related to the NPT's discussion that was, had last week, or a couple of weeks ago. Article 58, to see if the town will vote to transfer care, custody, and control and management of certain parcels to the Conservation Commission, parcel 83, Map 7, parcel 83A, Map 8, parcels 86, 86A, and 87. This is a property off of Forest Street and also off of Aldrich Road down in the Winston Street area. It's all wet, it's largely wet and not buildable. And then that's it for the non-petitioned articles.
Okay, thank you. So certainly there is a lot to chew on there. Again, this is the first reading, the draft, we're first getting the numbers here this evening for the first time, so I'm sure there'll be lots of questions on this, and we would encourage everyone to attend on March 17th for the joint meeting of the Finance and Planning Board, where all these articles will be discussed. And then obviously, we wanna encourage folks to come on May 2nd for the annual town meeting, 10:30 at Wilmington High School. There is certainly a lot of items to vote on, a lot of, a lot of monies to be voted on, and so we hope everyone will show up and cast their vote. Moving on to communications.
First communication is just the quarterly status that is both the town of Wilmington as well as New England Trans-Rail and Wilmington-Woolburn Intermodal is required to file with the Surface Transportation Board. Essentially, there's really no appreciable activity going on with regard to that proposal and its, as I think I've mentioned in previous updates, the New England Trans-Rail and Wilmington-Woolburn Intermodal, I believe, are waiting to see the outcome of EPA's decision with regard to the Olin property. Next is correspondence from Daniel Veerman, member of the Board of Appeals, notification of...
Mr. Hall, Mr. Chair, if you, please, I do have a conflict with Attorney Veerman. I just wanna read something very briefly.
Please.
The town manager's office received an email last Tuesday from Dan Veerman, the chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, communicating his potential conflict with a pending application for a special permit for the Fourth of July Committee. Previously, for an unrelated matter, I had reached out to the State Ethics Commission for an opinion as to whether my prior professional relationship with Attorney Veerman would constitute conduct which would cause a reasonable person to conclude that a conflict existed. On that, for that separate matter, I was advised that participating in the discussion relating to Mr. Veerman's involvement would constitute a conflict as defined by Mass. General Laws, Chapter 268A, Section 23B3. Accordingly, I will now leave the room for the duration of this discussion, because there is a board to consider item on this as well, and ask that the recording secretary note my recusal and absence in the minutes, and further note when I return following the discussion of the next agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Mr. Hall, continue, please.
Yes, so this was a, an email that was sent to my attention from Attorney Daniel Veerman. As everyone knows, he is a member of the Board of Appeals. He notes, as you're aware, I'm a member of the Wilmington Board of Appeals. It has just recently and informally been brought to my attention that on March 18th, 2020, the Fourth of July Committee will be applying for a special permit to locate the Fourth of July Carnival to the property known as the former Swain School Site on Middlesex Avenue for this year's upcoming Independence Day celebration. The area is directly across the street from my residence at 131 Middlesex Avenue. Although I am not sure if I am technically a direct of butter, I certainly may be, and certainly live within 300 feet of the area. When the issue first arose years ago, I contacted town council, who informed me that due to the proximity of my residence to the area in question, the safe course of conduct would be to recuse myself from hearing the committee's special permit application, since a direct of butter would be presumed to have a financial interest in the matter. Although I do not believe the Carnival would necessarily benefit or disadvantage me financially due to the location of my house in the area, I was advised that the presumption of financial interest is a matter of law, if not fact. He advised me to communicate my conflict to the appointing authority, namely the Board of Selectmen, and they have, on all four previous occasions, decided to waive my conflict after proper deliberation and direction. Toward that end, please forward this communication to the Board of Selectmen. Should you, they decide to entertain this issue at their next meeting, deliberate, and take such action.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have board to consider items, starting with Mr. Veerman.
So as was noted in Mr. Veerman's communication, he has for a number of years now made a similar notice to the board disclosing the potential for a conflict. As I have indicated in prior years, in my estimation, it does not appear that the, based upon the activities that would be taking place if the special permit is granted, that it will advantage or disadvantage Mr. Veerman. And it would be my suggestion that the board, Board of Selectmen determine that Dan Veerman's ownership of the property near the Carnival site is not so substantial as to likely affect him from impartially acting on the special permit application submitted by the Fourth of July Committee.
Okay, would anybody like to offer a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion as prescribed by the town manager.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
No, second.
Motion's made, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Four-four, and one sustaining. Thank you.
Should I get selectmen Eaton back?
Please.
All right, so next under board to consider is a request of the town clerk to appoint additional election, election workers, and she is requesting Penny Dudley, Donna Flynn, and Sierra Pelletier. So these individuals approved would assist with the upcoming election.
Is there a motion?
Two.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
The next request is for the board to authorize, to actually execute the agreement with the farmer's market, Wilmington Farmer's Market, for the dates that you authorized at your prior meeting, which run from June to October.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the license agreement for the Wilmington's Farmer's Market?
Two.
Motion's been made, a second, and thank you, is there discussion?
Just a quick question.
Please.
In here, I know it describes the Shoshine, I mean, the Swain School area, and I know that there's one date, July 5th, that's going to Yentile.
Yeah.
Does that need to be in here? I know it hasn't in the past, but, but I read through it, and I didn't see it, and I wasn't sure, only, and I only say that because there's, you know, they have insurance liability and everything else, we wanna make sure that that insurance liability translates over, transfers over to Yentile when they go over there for that one day.
Mm-hmm.
So I, you know, that's my only concern.
Yeah, I think we can modify it to...
And I know we've always approved it, but I just saw, you know...
Yeah, exactly. Thank you, Mr. Kyra, it's a good question. So, Mr. Hall, you'll double back on that?
Yeah.
Can this board approve tonight with stipulation that that is okay?
I, I think that's appropriate, and then, you know, just have to sign it at your next meeting on the 9th, I guess, March 9th.
So why don't we go ahead and approve, vote for it now, so if it passes, the group can go ahead and plan their events, and then we can hopefully take care of the signing at a future date. So they're ready to go, they just need a license, so we're going to...
So I guess maybe just defer it until March 9th, then, and then the board can sign it, the revised version that will reference the July 5th date.
Okay, is there a motion to table this discussion?
Two.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? It's unanimous, we'll table this till the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Kyra, for catching that.
Number nine is a request from Tina Stewart, Library Director, Wilmington Memorial Library is collaborating with the Wilmington-Tuckbury Chamber of Commerce and the Department of Elder Services to host a Community Health and Wellness Fair on Saturday, March 14th at the Knights of Columbus from 9:00 a.m. to noon. In order to promote the fair, I am requesting your permission to put yard signs 18 inches by 24 inches on the Town Common Rotary Park, front of the public buildings locations from February 28th through March 14th.
Okay, is there a motion?
Two.
Second.
Motion's been made, a second, and thank you, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Next is correspondence from the Wilmington Community Fund. For the past several years, Wilmington Community Fund has sponsored the Town Shredding Day at the Wilmington Town Common Parking Lot. The event has grown very popular, residents appreciate having the opportunity to clean out their personal papers and have them safely shredded. We'd like to have the event again this year on Saturday, September 19th, from 9:00 to noon.
What's that date again? I think my wife would love me to shred a lot of stuff in my office.
It's September 19th.
Okay, I bet you she already wrote it down already, thank you.
There'll probably be some selectmen there, I think. Is there a motion?
Two.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, and down here, is the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Can I borrow one of the brand new town trucks, we're gonna appropriate this town meeting maybe?
Let's see, it's unanimous, thank you.
Next is correspondence from the Redding Municipal Light. You'll recall, there was correspondence that initially was sent to the board back in December advising the board that we're approaching the 10-year mark. There's 10 years remaining on the agreement between the town and RMLD, and actually each of the member communities, North Redding, Redding, and Linfield. As part of the agreement, there is a requirement that RMLD place the member communities on notice, and the communities have 180 days within which to indicate whether they are seeking to extend the agreement for another 10 years. The last couple of times that this has been done, it was done at town meeting in having conversations with Mark Rich, town council. He has indicated to me that because of a change in the Municipal Modernization Act, where RMLD is a, essentially a, another municipal entity, because this is an intermunicipal agreement, it does not require a town meeting vote, it can be done by the Board of Selectmen. It's my understanding that North Redding and Linfield have already acted on this. It's, so I guess just to finish that out, it's, in my estimation, based upon the, a number of factors, the service and the significant requirements to look at options for other vendors for electrical, electrical power, it would be my recommendation that the board authorize the 10-year extension. If at some point in time, there's a desire to look at alternatives, I think that process really should happen well in advance of this 180-day period, so there's adequate time to really consider options, if that were to be considered at some point.
Mr. Eaton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I do agree that the Redding Municipal Light does provide great service and comparatively lower costs, but I did want to include in the discussion the email that I received, and I'm sure several other people received this afternoon, I got it at 3:32 this afternoon, from Redding Municipal Light regarding a ransomware security breach that they were victimized by. It did, and I'm just reading from the email that I received, it says, "At this time, there is no indication that customer financial data sets, such as bank account and credit card information, has been compromised as it is housed in a separate third-party system. However, customer account information such as name, address, email address, and historical electrical usage may have been accessed." I, I would prefer tabling this discussion until we've received some sort of detailed explanation showing exactly what the, the scope of the breach was, what the response was, and what the preventative measures in the future was being. This is, we're already in an agreement to use Redding Municipal Light through, until 2030, and this would be to extend it through 2040. I just wanted, give us the opportunity while we do have a little bit of time, because they're asking for a response by May 31st of this year, just to do our due diligence to make sure that, since the personal information of the residents of town may have been accessed without their permission, that we are making sure that this is a one-time event that they're actively trying to prevent in the future.
Can I take that as a motion?
Sure.
And is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, a second, is there any discussion tabling this item? I think it's a great idea, thank you, Mr. Eaton, for catching that. All those in favor? It's unanimous, we'll table this item. Until we can get further information, and then we'll place it on the appropriate agenda going forward.
Mr. Chair, just a question, tell me, I know I'm on table items, we're not to have discussion, but has our attorneys looked at the agreement and reviewed it and given their guidance on it, or their...
So I have had Mark Rich look at the agreement, you know, quite frankly, I, I think the agreement needs to be updated. Whether now is the appropriate time or not is, you know, where we're in this 180-day window is, I think, the question.
I just wanna make sure before we sign an extension for 10 years, that our attorneys are giving us proof along on that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I've had the conversation.
We're just not saying, okay, we looked at it and...
Yeah.
We're just not saying, okay, we looked at it and didn't really look at it.
Great idea. Okay, number 12.
This is a request from the Wilmington, Friends of the Wilmington Baseball, for a fundraiser car wash at the July 4th building to be held on May 9th to support the team. We don't have any particular time for this car wash. Beverly did reach out to the gentleman who is Mark Galucci, who had sent us the correspondence. We've not heard back from him. Typically, these events run from 9:00 to 12:00, or 10:00 to 1:00. I think perhaps if the board is so inclined, you could authorize the use of the area subject to finalizing the time. Or you could table it. It's your call.
No, I'll make a motion that we authorize the use of the area until we finalize the time.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion?
Also request that they check with, I think that's one of St. Thomas's first communion days. So they might, which is like right next door.
They may get a lot of business that way.
That lot, so they might want to just make sure. When they're finalizing the time, that they are aware of that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. And finally, number 13.
Number 13. This is an item that the Chair had requested be considered this evening with regard to the scheduling of times, town events, on either Election Day or Town Meeting Date. There, it was noted by the Chair that on May 2nd, the Recreation Department has scheduled a trip to New York City, and clearly, there's an intent to try to encourage residents to attend Town Meeting and to engage in voting, and the question was raised as to whether there should be a restriction in terms of having town activities or town instances where the town has some authority to limit activities, whether that should be the case for Election Day or Town Meeting Day.
Yep, and as the Manager mentioned, after a very lengthy discussion between him and I the other day, I felt that we ought to take it up here and discuss it as a board. And my personal opinion is that we have spent a lot of time, as a community, trying to encourage folks to attend both of these days, but really, most recently, Town Meeting. In fact, the Bylaw Committee, some of which were up here this evening, spent a lot of time trying to find ways to encourage attendance at Town Meeting. And I just feel like this is counterproductive to send people out of state on the same day. So I guess my personal opinion is that I would be looking for, going forward, although these trips are well-attended and they're fantastically planned by our Rec Department, that we take a look at alternative dates for out-of-state trips other than Town Meeting Day. And so that's just my personal opinion, so I wanted to make sure we had that discussion here publicly amongst my colleagues, and that's why it's here this evening, so.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would agree with you. First off, I was a little taken aback that this was even on a board-to-consider item, because I recall last year as Chair, I had this discussion with the Town Manager, because during elections last year, there were three events that took place. One was from the library, had a yoga outside on the Common from 8:00 to 9:00, I'm going by memory. There was Town Cleanup Day on that day, and there was a trip to New Hampshire that was scheduled to be back by 4:30. And we had specific discussion on that, and since Town Election ran from 8:00 to 8:00, we found, or I decided that there wouldn't be a restriction, people would still have time enough to vote on that. But it was decided in our discussion that a letter would go out to town staff and department heads, that they would no longer have town events on Election Day and on Town Meeting Day, not to schedule so that there'd be a conflict. So that's why I'm surprised that this is on here. So either, Mr. Hall, you didn't write that letter to the department heads that we discussed, or your department heads are not following your instructions, and I don't know which is which. But I'm very disappointed that we're having a conflict, especially on Town Meeting. It's not acceptable, really. Just, it, someone lost some common sense by scheduling that date, really. For me, there's the election, and then there's Town Meeting, and that's it. You have 52 weeks, and you can certainly find another day to go to New York City. So did the letter go out?
I don't recall that it did, so if the conversation, it certainly did, was something that I would not, I admit.
Do you recall the conversation? Because I was...
Okay, I don't recall the conversation, but certainly, I'm sure it had, but...
That really got me a little angered to see that, because I certainly do recall that conversation. I'm surprised that you don't.
So we find ourselves where there are some events that are planned, and so I think, you know, now's a good time to plan for the future. And obviously, there's a million and one things going on on any given day, especially in the springtime, when the weather turns, and we're all so busy. There are so many different events that are going on. I know in the past, even youth groups that we don't govern, you know, like youth soccer, has taken the day off from youth soccer, and under certain youth soccer presidents, they've decided to do that, others haven't, but again, we don't govern that. So, but my biggest thing is I don't know if I want to see shipping people out to New York City on a day where we're trying to really encourage folks to come and vote on over $100 million budget. I think it's so important that, you know, it's not mandatory that anybody comes to Town Meeting, but certainly, I think that the town's focus should be on that, encouraging residents to come on that day and have their voice be heard, so that's why we're here.
Mr. Chair, I would just ask that we confirm, or the board confirm, so right now, there is permitted for the Yentile Field Youth Soccer from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on both the Town Meeting Date and the Date of Election. Now, we, being the Recreation Department, grants the permits to authorize them to use that field. Whitfield School, the Whitfield Site, again, is permitted by Rec, and they are also permitted for both dates. Town Park, there's, again, permitted through Rec. There's a cricket club group that's scheduled to be there from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Little League, historically, has, again, requested through the Rec Department permitting for Town Hall Fields and Rotary Park is the, and again, that's granted through the Rec Department. Should we also be advising those groups that they will not be permitted for those dates?
Mr. Chair.
Well, if I could just respond quickly, I, you know, again, I feel a little embarrassed that we're having this conversation, but if I need to pull out a map and draw the distance from Yentile Field to Town Hall compared to the distance from Town, excuse me, the Wilmington High School to New York City, I'm happy to do that, but I think it's apples and oranges, out-of-state trips compared to the youth group soccer games that, you know, take 45 minutes to an hour. I just don't see the two to be the same at all.
Yeah, and it's permitted. It's not sponsored by.
Correct.
It's, so they're independent organizations, Little League Soccer, so we're just giving them a permit. We're not sponsoring it as we're sponsoring a trip, so I see it as a difference there as well.
Well, and if I could just kind of chime in, I think youth soccer, all of their in-town games on the weekend of Town Meeting are moved to that Sunday, so that there isn't a conflict. The only conflict that arises is the travel games, which obviously, they need to go by what other towns are doing, and they don't have as much flexibility, so, I mean, my only concern in reading this, I was thinking of that scenario, and for Town Election Day, I mean, obviously, it doesn't, it doesn't take that long to vote. So I would hate to see, you know, things like youth soccer or baseball have to rearrange their spring schedules to block off the entire day if, in reality, they can go to a game and then go vote afterwards. I understand Town Meeting is a set schedule, and that's why I appreciate youth soccer, you know, accommodating the way that they do, and moving at least the in-town games to that Sunday, so that it affords families the ability to go to Town Meeting if they want to, and they don't have kids playing a travel game at that time. So I get, you know, my concern for this year specifically is we have three articles discussing a senior center, and I think a majority of the people who go on these day trips for the Rec Department are seniors, so I'm a little bit concerned in that respect, that seniors who signed up for the trip might not have remembered that it was also Town Meeting, or, you know, are now realizing, after they've made a deposit, that there's a conflict. So I guess I would be asking how that's going to play out if, by having this on the agenda tonight, anyone who wanted to be at Town Meeting and didn't realize the conflict, you know, is the Rec Department going to honor them being able to get their deposit back, or do they lose their deposit to have to come to Town Meeting to chime in on how they feel about these three articles? Because that would be really concerning to me, that we know these dates every year, you know, but the average citizen might not have it at the top of their head when they're, when they're planning things like this out, and I'd hate for them to feel like their voice isn't being heard that day.
Yeah, another point that we should mention is that in elections, we can now vote early, and there's absentee voting. My specific issue is with Town Meeting Day, and again, I feel obligated to bring this up here tonight, because we did have a committee of folks, one of them's here, who spent months trying to find out ways we can encourage attendance, and now we have a town-sponsored event going out of state, and that's my issue. Again, I've said it in this room dozens of times, how I feel about the Rec Department. They're second to none. Karen Campbell and her staff are fantastic. They do an outstanding job. So this shouldn't be taken as a personal issue with them at all. They do a fantastic job. I think we all agree on that. I just want to make sure that going forward, this administration gets ahead of this, and we can look at alternative dates for an out-of-state trip. I think they're, from what I understand, usually well-attended. There's some gone overseas in some trips, and they've been very well-attended. I just think we ought to look at other alternative dates other than Town Meeting. Mr. Eaton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few things. I would not be in favor of eliminating the trip for this year, because folks are already signing up for that, and if I had signed up for a trip to New York City and was looking forward to it, and Ms. Campbell and her staff reached out to me and said that the Board of Selectmen canceled the trip because they want me to attend annual Town Meeting or to go and vote, it would probably affect my vote, and not in a way that would be reflect, would benefit anybody that's up here, simply because I, truthfully, I think people have the right to make their decisions. If somebody signs up for a trip that happens on the day of a Town Meeting or a Town Election, that is a choice that they make, whether it's knowledgeable or not. Voting is a right that is not an obligation. We certainly want to encourage folks, and I think that this board has been very engaged in trying to encourage folks in changing the structure of Town Meeting and even the date of Town Election to try and maximize civic engagement. But I think we have to understand that there are some folks that are going to see a trip to New York City as more appealing than going to Town Meeting or going to vote. Slightly aside from that, I do think that because the Recreation Department, because the Elderly Services Department, because the library has a lot of really fantastic programs, I would like to see those departments actually more prominently displayed at annual Town Meeting, because, let's face it, I mean, right now, it starts at 10:30, but we don't usually get a quorum until 11:00, so folks are sitting around, and usually, they don't end until late afternoon, so people are just sitting in a chair, and at some point, most folks are going to get up and walk around. And while that is there, I think we should be capitalizing on the opportunity to really advertise a lot of the services that this town does provide. It's very easy to just kind of focus on what you have in front of you, and for folks, you know, I'll, I'll give the example of when I was first appointed to the Finance Committee. I was 29, I was single, and I had no kids, and I had really just a passing knowledge as to what was going on in the senior center. I had no kids in the school system, and I was not somebody who was regularly signing up for any Rec Department programs. And as I got involved in the Finance Committee, I got really a kind of a very good, detailed grilling as to what is out there and available to people, but I think a lot of folks, to Ms. Mahoney's point, might not be aware of all of the different offerings that their tax dollars go to, and I think if we could kind of put that in front of folks, they might be able to sign up for a Rec Department program or learn about a different program that's going on at the library that might be of interest to them. While folks are in the building, why aren't we showing off what wonderful things that our town has to offer? But I, certainly for the upcoming, this, the trip to New York that's going to be taking place in two months, I think it sends a poor message to folks that might have already signed up, and I don't know if anyone is paid to then cancel the trip, because we want them to show up to Town Meeting, because I think that, I think that's a public relations misstep.
And I don't want to interrupt you, I apologize, but just to be clear, we're talking about in the future, so I'm not talking about specifically.
Okay.
You know, I think we're in agreement that we're approaching, I think people have already signed up. Is that correct?
Yes.
For this one, yeah, so we wouldn't want to do that. Again, sorry to interrupt you, but I want to make that point.
I think I like what Mr. Kira had suggested a year ago. I think it would make sense, at least for Town Meeting purposes, to give the directive to the department heads that they shouldn't be scheduling anything that day, and they also shouldn't be granting permits for any public property that day, and I think that eliminates, you know, hopefully, a lot of the issues we'd be dealing with or the conflicts that would be taking place. We can't, you know, other organizations, we can't really control, but if they're using town property that day, then if we're saying there's no permits available for Town Meeting Day, I think that they'll have to figure out an alternative, whether it's that they're going to continue their activity elsewhere or they're going to reschedule it to a different day.
And I'll just go back to my original comments. I don't think really, like, a baseball game or softball game or soccer game is really the issue here, where those can be driven to within a matter of five to 10 minutes, and they usually last about an hour, hour and a half at the most. For me, it's the out-of-state trip that would really limit somebody, and again, a great point by Mr. Eaton, that, you know, you don't have to go to Town Meeting. Nobody wants to, but I, again, I think that this group spent a lot of time trying to find ways to encourage, you know, and I wanted to bring this up so we could talk about it here tonight, going in the future, not this specific May 2nd trip.
So to be clear, and I admit I missed the boat on this one. I certainly don't deny that the conversation happened. It may have, you know, there's a lot of things that cross my plate if it, so I missed it, but going forward, I will instruct department heads not to schedule events, and I guess I want to be clear, is it strictly out-of-state travel? There's certainly library activities that are going on at this, on May 2nd. There's a couple of reading programs and...
Let me interrupt. I'm sorry. Let me make a motion that there be no town-sponsored events on Town Meeting Day. Is that what you're, we're looking for? Because we know we can vote. You have a time from 8:00 to 8:00 to vote. You can early vote. You can vote over the counter, so that shouldn't be a problem. Well, maybe we should say, no, no out-of-state trips on Town Election. No town-sponsored events on Town Meeting is a form of a motion.
And just to clarify, on the town-sponsored, you're not talking about the permit of a park? Like, I personally don't have a problem with the permit.
Not permitting.
For the, you know, Yentile Field, having games on that day, that's a different issue for me.
That's different. That's permitting a private group.
So your motion is no out-of-state trip on Town Meeting Day?
No out-of-state trip on Town Election. No town-sponsored events on Town Meeting Day. Which would include any event.
All right, so anything from...
Like a town cleanup day?
Right.
You're talking like a concert on the Common.
Programs at the library, programs at the senior center, any of those things would not happen on Town Meeting?
Well, the senior center's not open on Saturdays, as we well know.
Right.
Right, and the library is open as its regular business, right, on Saturday?
Right, but again, there are programs...
You're not going to close the library, are you?
No, but I mean, there are programs scheduled for this Town Meeting for, there's a reading group, and there's a couple of other things going on for periods of time during the 2nd, May 2nd. So if, you know, those are programs...
A reading group like what?
Yeah, so I have, actually, the, just the adult, no, and the youth is in the packet, received a week ago. So on May 2nd, there's a fiction critique group at night... So on May 2nd, there's a fiction critique group at 9:00, uh, 9:15 AM, uh, at the library and a creating a garden for honeybees at 10:00 AM and for children, there's an ACT practice test, uh, from 12:30 to 4:30 PM. Both of that would conflict. I mean, certainly if you're, you're talking an ACT practice test, you're talking about, uh, high school students that are not yet of age to vote.
Right.
So I, and I mean, just my own editorial, like, certainly the library's right next door to town hall where we're holding our town meetings, so, um, and, I mean, the fiction critique group, I don't know really anything about it, but just looking at the March, April and May calendars, they seem to meet on the first Saturday of the month. Uh, so having them, uh, skip a Saturday would certainly disrupt their regular routine. Uh, and I don't see, uh, the other two, uh, programs that have been mentioned as, um, having any other occurrences, but I, I...
We're talking a year from now, so I'm sure that they can adjust that one-hour schedule.
Well, and I guess, I'm still trying to, cause the election day, we do offer kind of other ways to vote if you can't physically be there on election day, so I'm just trying to, I'm trying to wrap my head around, do we need to put as much restriction, you know, if someone was, knew they were going away for that weekend, they could vote early, they could do an absentee ballot.
Happens a lot with April vacation.
Right, and, but for town meeting, my concern is even if it's just a game, you know, we kind of have talked in the past and that, one of the things with quorum is, you know, when you're texting, you have a text chain going to drag people in off the fields to vote on the one article they might be interested in and they're ignoring the 52 others and they're not sitting, you know, to hear the thoughtful presentation about the town's budget. Um, you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm concerned with, you know, anyone having that conflict, that they're not going to be able to, you know, as, as Mr. Eaton's saying, you know, we, if we can utilize town meeting as, as people spending time learning about their town that day and learning about all the, the things that the town offers, uh, you know, I don't want, I, I guess I'm, I'm concerned if we're not, if we're keeping quorum and, you know, we're, we're expecting it, why wouldn't we want to kind of have the town take the day off so that people are available from beginning to end and not just coming in for the articles that they're interested in? You know, like, why wouldn't we say no permits for that one day and no activities that, for that one day? Um, and that way, town meeting is, even if you don't want to go, I mean, maybe you take it as a day off. I, I know I love it when my kids don't have the rare instance that we have a weekend day that we don't have anything and we can actually do something.
I just hate to lose out with the time of the kids. I mean, we, it's winter here like nine months a year. They have limited time on those fields.
But they could do it on the Sunday, I mean...
Yeah.
Well, let me just say this, maybe you want to think about it, but if you guys want to chip in and get a ticket by second, send me to New York, I'm there. You know? Maybe that helps out at all.
Well... All right, we do have a motion for Mr. Kyra. Uh, and just so I can get my train of thought again, you mind repeating it, Mr. Kyra?
The motion was that there'd be no, uh, out-of-state trips on the day of town election and no town-sponsored events on the day of, uh, town meeting.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second it for discussion. Any discussion?
For discussion, just, I, I would, Mr. Chair, um, I would support the no out-of-state trips on the date of town meeting, for annual town meeting. Special town meeting's a little bit more difficult to plan around because they can happen a lot quicker.
Yep.
Um, but I, uh, I think the, the point that Ms. Omahony makes about, uh, early voting, I think that does provide some flexibility to folks to, uh, vote if they were going to, if they had a conflict, whether it was a trip that was from the town or a town-sponsored activity, or they were just going on their own or doing something else that's different. Um, but I, I, um, would not support any restrictions on what the town's offering on election day, uh, or any town-sponsored activities that are taking place during town meeting day, annual town meeting day.
Okay. Mr. Kyra, are you willing to amend? Do you want to specify just the town meeting day?
Sure, I, I, yeah, I have no problems with that.
Okay, so you want to amend your motion just to be for town meeting day? We're going to eliminate any verbiage about annual town meeting, ex, annual town election?
Election, right.
Okay, so your motion is to limit, uh, town-sponsored events on town meeting day?
Right.
Perhaps, perhaps I wasn't clear enough, just, uh, I, I have no problem with town-sponsored activities happening on, uh, town meeting day, just not, uh, out-of-state trips on annual town meeting day. So, an-annual and special town meetings are kind of a special event where you actually have to be there to participate.
Correct.
Um, town elections, you can vote early, you don't need to show up between 8:00 and 8:00 on that, on the Saturday. Uh, so if you want to go to an event at the library that's going to take 45 minutes, you should be able to make it back for a couple of articles and if there are some that you miss, that's a decision that I think the residents have the right to make. Uh, I don't, I don't think that, uh, we should be making that decision for them.
Yeah, and just to further discussion, again, from the beginning, mine has been really focused on the out-of-state. I see, you know, an activity at the library for an hour, really not much different than a ballgame for an hour down the street. For me, it's just the out-of-state. That, and again, people can choose what they want to do, that's the beauty of this country. Uh, but we're trying to really encourage attendance, it's such an important day. This year specifically, we're going to vote on nearly $120 million of our tax money and I really would encourage everybody to come and I hope that, you know, going forward, that that will be a priority for the, for this community, to encourage people to come. Whether they come or not, it's up to them. Those are my comments. Any further discussion on Mr. Kyra's motion? Okay, so the motion is for, to limit...
Yeah, no town-sponsored events, other than actually the town meeting, uh, on the day of the town meeting, right?
And not for special town meetings? Just the annual town meeting?
Annual town meeting.
Okay. Seeing none of discussion, all those in favor? Three, four? Are those against? Two. The motion passes three to two.
Yeah, I'm going to vote, uh, four to one.
I, I voted...
All right. Are you voting for it or against it?
I voted for it.
Okay, for it, okay, so it's a, just to be clear, there are four in favor of that motion and there is one opposed. So the motion passes four to one. Okay. Okay. And again, that is for, starting in 2021.
Right.
Okay. All right, public comments? Any public comments? Mr. West?
Hi, good evening, Frank West, Two Birds Wood Road. Just two comments. One, uh, I was wondering if there was, if you'd be given any update, uh, in the reasonably near future on the, uh, substation in North Wilmington? You know, if there's any news report tonight or if there's anything upcoming that in a few weeks we could hear, if there's anything going on with that?
I'm going to show you that the second, uh, we know something, I'll make it public myself.
And the other thing we haven't heard about recently is your trash contract. So I was wondering if there's any update, you know, the whole trash recycling and all that with everything, you know, that I know you guys had a revised contract to give the guy, well, you know, give the current contractor additional funds, but I didn't know if, if, if there's any update as to the town either looking to continue with that vendor, going with another vendor.
It was briefly tested upon earlier with some of the articles that are coming up on the warrant, but Mr. Hall, do you want to expand on that?
Uh, so we will not be using the existing, uh, trash contractor. As of, uh, 6:30, uh, a, uh, invitation for bid was put out for, um, for the services for collection of recycling and, uh, trash, uh, and subject to appropriation at town meeting, we would be, uh, going with a new vendor.
Would there be any, uh, changes to the contract as far as, like, right now we're paying, I think it's $10 for white goods and certain, like, bulk items, I think you can pick up one, you'll pick up one per week with prior notification, would there be any changes into any of that or...
Uh, you know, in terms of the specifics, I, I think probably the best thing for me to do would be to put something together in, in the form of a memo and I can report that back to the board. I don't recall that there were going to be any, uh, substantial, uh, changes in that respect, um, but there are certainly additional costs. We're, we're still going to be paying for the, uh, costs associated with the, uh, barrels because when we signed on with the prior contractor, it was a 10-year agreement and we, uh, portioned the cost of the recycling and, uh, um, trash containers over the course of 10 years, so we'll continue to pay the remaining five years on that. Um, but, you know, there's, there are details that I can certainly provide.
And one other thing on that is that, you know, we, I think we mentioned a couple of weeks back, several of us attended the Mass Municipal Association Conference and, and one of the biggest topics of the day was trash and the concerns about trash and it's not just here locally, but nationally and worldwide, the concerns about the rising cost of trash collection and what we're going to do in terms of recycling. So, I think everybody's concerned about that, including us.
Yeah, cause one of the things that you brought up with the recycling and, as you know, it, it sounds like China's not taking our recycling anymore, which, you know, that, they, that was like a cheap avenue to get rid of recycling and encouraged recycling and now, you know, there's landfills now with recycled stuff, so, you know, does there, you know, what, is there a real benefit in some respects in, in some people's mind about, you know, should we be doing recycling at all if it's just going to end up in a, for lack of a better term, a recycling landfill as, as opposed to a trash landfill? It kind of doesn't make a lot of sense. But it is, but it is, A, it's, you know, it's, I mean, it's a good thing for the environment if we can encourage recycling and, and get the stuff recycled and obviously the cost of picking up recycling is less than the cost of trash, so it'd be nice if we could keep that going. Thank you.
Mr. DePalma?
Seeing that we're not using the, uh, co, uh, company now, have you, uh, decided on another contractor that you're going to be using for the recycling, for the rubbish pickup?
Uh, yes, subject to town meeting, it would be Casella.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Sir?
That went up to bid, Mr. Hall?
It did.
Okay. Um, I had some, uh, comments, uh, relative to the environment and I have some other questions. Um, one of the agenda items tonight was relative to the storage of fuel and, um, as you all know, the fuel storage went from underground to above ground. However, the piping is still underground going to the pumps and this large volume of storage is directly beside our water well field. Um, in addition to that, it's, um, directly abutting a quarry where there's extremely large blast shots going off that shake the houses and the neighborhood. And, um, I just want to go on record saying that I oppose the storage of fuel beside our water well field, our water supply, especially when there's massive blasting going on at a quarry right beside it. So not only is it shaking the houses, it's got to be shaking those underground piping, uh, connections and it's just a threat that I don't think, uh, is worth gambling with. I've gone on record before saying that the, uh, storage of fuel should probably be down at the recycling center. I personally would like to see all our DPW, um, moved down to the recycling center. Um, I went up, I was on record as saying that if there is an immediate need, uh, for addressing an emergency rescue, such as, uh, rescuing people from a smoke inhalation from a fire or an emergency, that you could, uh, immediately, um, establish a garage down at the DPW, uh, for, uh, a substation. Uh, we don't need to build a million-dollar facility. Uh, this is immediate response. Uh, the fire department, uh, would be there in short time after that. So I would think that it would be prudent for the board, um, to have an article on a future selectman meeting, uh, an agenda item on a selectman meeting, uh, that deals with, with this issue. I know that Mr. Vendel, you've stated before that, um, the substation is in the forefront of your thoughts. However, I don't see any agenda items that, um, demonstrate that, that you're putting it on, on the agenda to address immediate need and I think that would be prudent to do that.
I'll take it under advisement, thank you.
Um, with regard to the other environmental issues, um, concerning the New England Transrail Station or Status Report, I, I wasn't really too impressed with that. I, um, feel as though that site, um, has damaged the town of Wilmington. We have a high rate of cancer. The chemical compound that was identified, uh, emanating from that site caused our wells to be shut down. We don't know how long the NDMA was in the wells and how many people ingested it. Um, we're still waiting to hear from a, a childhood cancer study. Uh, it's a little bit ridiculous that it's taken this amount of time to receive that study, but be that as it may, um, we've had chemical companies that have damaged our environment and our people and, uh, I don't really see anything being done to, um, exert the town's, um, enforcement of justice against those departments, against those companies. And I feel as though this board should take the initiative to, um, have a public hearing, invite people, advertise it, people that have had cancer, lost loved ones to cancer, um, and take the initiative and the action to bring, uh, a lawsuit against these companies. Uh, one company in particular is a multinational company, a multi-billion dollar company and, um...
Mr. McCall, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm going to give you 60 more seconds, okay?
60 more seconds on bigger of an issue? Um, I think the town deserves that property. I don't think New England Transrail deserves it. I don't think, uh, it, any intermodal, uh, company deserves that site. I think it should belong to the town of Wilmington. I think it should be a site that's completely cleaned up. I went on record before as saying the Ledges Project, where there's a half a million yards of clean material, which is diagonally almost across the street, could be brought over and have that entire site cleaned up. But I would like to see somebody on this board take the initiative to request an agenda item, uh, for taking action against these companies that have polluted us. And, uh, failure to do that, I think is, um, uh, just a tremendous failure at your, your positions. With regard to...
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCall. Anyone else have any public comments? Moving to announcements, anybody have an announcement? Okay, seeing none, new business, is there any new business? Okay, with that, we'll move to important dates.
Important dates, we have early voting, it started today, goes through the 28th, Town Hall Auditorium, 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM. And then on Thursday, the 27th, it'll be, uh, 8:30 AM to 7:00 PM. February 25th is the next, uh, finance committee meeting here in Room 9, public, uh, Police Department, Public Safety and Fire. Uh, and then Economic Development is on February 26th, here in Room 9, 7:00 PM. February 27th, Finance Committee, Room 9, 7:00 PM, Town Clerk and IT. March 3rd is the Presidential Primary, polls open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. March 3rd, Finance Committee, Shawshank Tech, 7:00 PM, regarding the Shawshank Tech School District. March 5th, Finance Committee, Wilmington High School, 7:00 PM, regarding the school district budget. Um, March 9th is a Board of Selectmen's meeting, 7:00 PM. Uh, March 14th is the Community Health and Wellness Fair, Knights of Columbus, 9:00 AM to noon. Uh, March 17th, the Finance Committee Planning Board Joint Public Hearing, relative to the warrant for the town meeting, uh, that's in the auditorium at 7:00 PM.
Mr. Hall, just to clarify, the February 25th meeting, I think you meant to say that it was at the Public Safety Building and not in Room 9?
Oh, that's right. That's right. Public Safety is, uh, tomorrow night, Public Safety Building, Police, Fire and, um, Dispatch.
Right here, in Room 9, right?
No, no, Public Safety.
It's at the Public Safety Building.
Yes.
Okay, excuse me. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Still move. Second.
All those in favor? She ain't never... Thank you, good night, everybody.